Welcome to the League of Women Voters Macomb County Candidate Forum for the Offices of Warren City Council, Districts 1 through 5. My name is Catherine Labune and I am the President of the League of Women Voters, Macomb County. The Macomb County League provides nonpartisan voter services to the cities, townships, and villages of Macomb County. The League of Women Voters is a national organization whose mission is to promote political responsibility through informed and active participation of citizens and government. The League neither opposes nor supports candidates or political parties. We welcome all age 16 and over to membership. I'd like to thank Warren Consolidated Schools Superintendent Robert Livernoy, Warren-Mott High School Principal Kevin Kittel, and AV Coordinator Nick Petrone for the use of this building and its facilities. Also, thanks to TV Warren for recording this event. I would now like to introduce our moderator for the evening, League Member Maria Rivera.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you. Hi, my name is -- good evening and welcome to the Warren Candidate Forum for the general election to be held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2023. My name is Maria Rivera. I have been a League Member for 20 years. The Macomb League covers voter services, like this forum, for cities, township, and villages through Macomb County. All the volunteers helping to conduct this forum tonight are League Members. Some, including myself, are Warren residents. Our residency status has no effect whatsoever on the conduct of this forum, or any other for that matter. All candidates will be treated fairly and equitably, as in every forum that we conduct. Forums are conducted by Leagues across the country under strict guidelines. We do not tolerate personal attacks by candidates or by members of the audience. Any such attempt may result in the removal of that individual from the forum. Please silence your cell phones. The recording of this event by the audience is strictly prohibited. Candidates have agreed that they, their organizations, and their supporters will not use the video recording or any audio or video clips for political advertising or any other purposes. Candidates may place a link to the entire forum recording on their websites. This recording is the property of the League of Women Voters. No campaign materials of any kind, including t-shirts, caps, buttons, et cetera, are permitted on school grounds, particularly in the forum room. The Warren Consolidated School District does not permit solicitation on school property. This includes printed campaign materials. However, audience members may meet with the candidates after the forum concludes if the candidates are available. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. The format was reviewed with and agreed to by each candidate prior to the forum. The audience is instructed to hold any applause until the forum has concluded. This forum is about the presentation of the candidates and their opinions to enable voters to make an informed decision at the polls. Statements expressed by the candidates are not endorsed nor opposed by the League of Women Voters. Also, the League of Women Voters does not certify any candidate responses to questions as accurate. Voters are encouraged to fact-check information shared at this forum. All candidates registered with the Macomb County Clerk for Warren Offices, including official write-in candidates, have been invited to participate in this forum. Tonight's forum is for the City Council, including Districts 1 through 5, which is all of Warren. You will be voting for one position for each district, each for a four-year term. Each candidate will be allowed a one-minute opening statement, a one-minute response time to each question, and a one-minute closing statement. In alphabetical order, the candidates running for election are, for District 1, Mohammed Islam, Melody McGee, and Charles Perry. Mr. Islam is a write-in candidate. For District 2, Jonathan Lafferty and Adam Saka. District 3, Daniel Bozek and Mindy Moore. District 4, Gary Boyke and Gary Watts. District 5, Henry Noonan, Brittany Tringalli, Eddie Kabisinski, Randy Hall. And Mr. Kabisinski and Mr. Hall are both write-in candidates. All candidates unable to participate were invited to submit a one-minute statement to be read by the League Moderator, myself, prior to the start of the forum. No statements were received by the League. The order of participation has been agreed to by all the members of -- all the candidates. Because this is just different districts, we just started with District 1 to my immediate left. So, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, you should be able to see, you know, for your district who your candidates are. Audience questions are to be in writing. Cards will be circulated for your use. They will then be collected by a League Member and delivered to the question sorters, who will sort for redundancy in inappropriate language. So please, hold your card up so it can be collected. The card -- so they'll come around and collect it for you so you don't have to get up. And just one question per card, please. Helping this evening are probably the most important person, two people actually, is the forum coordinator, and that is Kathy Poor, supported greatly by Catherine Labune. Greeters, Jerry DeMaire and John Keters. Question gatherers are Terry Gibb. Let's see, I don't think Lynn and Deb are here, right? Just you -- okay. Question sorters are Catherine Labune and Jerry Burden. And our timekeeper is Nanette Norbakish, who will hold up a card to demonstrate when 15 seconds are remaining and a card indicating stop. Can all the candidates see who I'm talking about right here? So she'll hold up stop when your time has expired. The purpose of this forum is to provide valuable, nonpartisan voter information so that voters can make an informed decision at the polls. As moderator, I reserve the right to close discussion on any question. Participating in the forum this evening are Charles Perry, Melody McGee for District 1, Jonathan Lafferty for District 2. I'm sorry, let me back up. For District 1, Mr. Islam is not in attendance this evening. For District 2, Jonathan Lafferty and Mr. Saka declined to participate. District 3, Mindy Moore and Mr. Bozek declined to participate. District 5, Gary Watts. I'm sorry. Yes, District 4, sorry, yes. District 4, Gary Watts. Mr. Boyke declined to participate. And District 5, we have Henry Noonan and Eddie Kabisinski. And Mr. Kabisinski is a write-in candidate. And Ms. -- yeah, Mr. Hall and Mr. Kabisinski are write-in candidates. Ms. Tringalli declined to participate. Please note, we will do our best to get to as many questions as possible. So we will now begin with the candidates' one-minute opening statements. We will start from Mr. Perry and down, and then the closing statements will be in the opposite order. Mr. Perry, your one-minute opening statement, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Do a 1, 2, 3.
1, 2, 3. Okay. How about now? Is that better? All right. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to participate in this forum and all the residents that came out this evening. I am currently serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals for Warren City -- for the City of Warren for the last three years. Good evening. My name is Charles Perry. I am running for Warren City Council, District 1. My wife and I have raised our children in Warren for the last 24 years. I'm a Vietnam veteran, serving with the 101st Airborne Division in Vietnam. After my military service, I attended Control Data Institute in Chicago, graduated as a computer programmer. During my time in IT, information technology, I've had a number of leadership positions, from shift supervisor to management. I worked at EDS as an infrastructure analyst. I was also a project manager for GM North American Operations.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, your time is up. 60 seconds goes kind of quickly. It goes fast. Ms. McGee, one-minute opening statement, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Melody McGee, and I am running for City Council, also in District 1 for the City of Warren. I've lived in Warren now for 23 years, and I got involved with Warren the moment I stepped inside the city. I'm originally from Detroit, Michigan. I graduated from Central Michigan University with a master's degree in human resources and a master's and a bachelor's degree in business administration. I worked in the City of Warren, and I'm involved in the community. I am a part of the emergency response team. I was appointed to the Macomb Board for Michigan Works, and I also worked for senior housing and was appointed as the Commissioner for Senior Housing. So I am very much involved in the community, and I have the heart to continue to serve in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. And Mr. Lafferty, you want to do a 1, 2 into your microphone?
Check, 1, 2.
Okay, very good. Mr. Lafferty, one-minute opening statement, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan Lafferty, and I serve as your councilman for District 2. Lived in this neighborhood for 45 years, my entire life, and served in the same neighborhood that I grew up in. I know the neighborhood better than anyone. Lived here with my wife Kelly of 21 years. We're raising our three children here, and all graduating -- I graduated from Warren-Mott High School right here, as did she. And I'm a music minister from St. Mark's, and I have a full-time career with Comerica Bank. And the neighborhood is where my focus is. It always has been. I believe that if you have the capability to serve, you have the responsibility to serve. That is the driving force behind my service to the neighborhood, who I put first before anything. I am a responsible, independent, and accountable candidate to the neighbors that elect me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moore, did you want to do a 1, 2, 3?
Testing 1, 2, 3.
Okay, great. Go ahead with your opening statement, please.
Thank you. I'm Mindy Moore. I am the Council Secretary at this time, and I am the District 3 Councilperson. This is my second term on council. I served in the early 2000s as an at-large member. Before that, I was on the Warren Consolidated Schools Board of Education, and I served on the Warren Civil Service Commission and the Planning Commission. My husband and I have lived in this town for 38 years. Our children went to public schools, went on to Michigan State University where they both graduated. My husband is a graduate of Fitzgerald. I have spent many years as a community leader, being involved in many of the organizations in town, the Symphony, the Women of Warren, Ladies Auxiliary VFW. I have been motivated by trying to do what the residents have expected me to do. I have created ordinances and put forward initiatives, and my impetus has been suggestions from our city workers and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Watts, you want to give it a 1, 2?
1, 2, testing 1, 2.
Okay. You never know. Thank you. 60-second opening statement, please.
Okay. I'm Gary Watts. I'm currently serving my first four-year term on Warren City Council. I'm a lifelong resident here. I raised my family here. I graduated from Fitzgerald. I went to Macomb College. After doing a few different jobs, I landed back in Macomb and did a 30-year career there on the maintenance management side. And I also served for 34 years in the Police Reserve Unit at Centerline. Very proud of those times. I also do fire photography for many fire departments in the area, so have a great relationship with police and fire. I served on the Crime Commission for 10 years back in the day, and I ran for council because I'm kind of like a neighborhood guy. I like to do great things. I want to help people. And I won, and here we are, so let's hope we can get another four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Mr. Noonan, your opening statement, please.
Well, let me first of all say, testing, testing. Okay. Thank you. I am Henry Noonan. I'm running for Warren City Council, District 5. I have a proven track record of public service and graduated from the University of Michigan with distinction. I've lived in my house on Gale Drive for 30 years. I'm confident that everything is good with my campaign, and with your support, I will win. And with your support, we can work together to make Warren a more vibrant city for all of us to enjoy. Henry Noonan, your independent vote, your independent voice.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Kabisinski, you want to do a 1, 2, 3?
Testing 1, 2, 3.
Okay. Perfect. Your opening statement, please.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Kabisinski. I am the current District 5 Councilman in the 5th District, representing South Central Warren. That will change to the East Central area. I'm a very proud Trump conservative. There should be no bones about this election is not nonpartisan. There are either liberal, or there are conservative in this election. I am the only proud conservative currently on the council. I have tried to bring wholesome, constitutional, positive change to South Central Warren and wish to continue to do that in the East Central area. But I have no qualms about this election as a write-in. Most people have already filed for their absentee ballots and their mail-in ballots, and those will probably count. This will be adjudicated in the Court of Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The first question now, we'll go first to Ms. McGee. So, first question. If elected, what two things would you like to accomplish during your term?
I think the two important things to me is our youth, for one. I would definitely like to work with our youth. Okay, I'm sorry. Can I start over?
Yeah, you want to start it again, please? Thanks, Nanette.
Okay. I think the two most important things to me that I would like to accomplish is working with our youth is number one. I would like to see more programs that are available for our youth for the future, training programs in technical areas such as AI. I would like for them to know about technology as well as become professional workers within our city. So I would like to bring in new programs. I would like to bring in fun activity where they're not always on the phone, and really working in the community and having fun in the community. The second item that I would like to work with is trying to lower the taxes of our residents. I would like to see our seniors have a discount tax program as well as our residents.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Lafferty, the two things you would like to accomplish during your term if you're elected?
Thank you. First investment is in our roads and infrastructure. We need to accelerate the pace of our neighborhood roads. We are simply not funding enough repairs, and our infrastructure is failing faster than we can repair it. The second item is our parks and recreation. We have a program in place today that is woefully inadequate, and we have facilities that are falling down around us. We have not made the needed investments in over two decades, and our Parks and Recreation Program is where our city begins. It begins with our youth, and then that transforms into model citizens that end up being responsible citizens, working with their families, working with their community, and then programs for our seniors and of all ages, being able to enjoy all of the amenities that our city has to offer. You can only do that with a well-funded and comprehensive parks program.
Thank you so much. Give you a second to -- okay. Ms. Moore, you're --
Thank you. I think everybody's probably going to say pretty much the same thing. We all agree that our parks and recreation are woefully in need of maintenance and ADA compliance, things to be put into place for the disabled children, adults alike. Before we go and put any fancy new things in, we've got to maintain what we've got. We've got to fix our bathrooms and all those things in the parks. We also have to address the rental landlord crisis because landlords are not taking care of their properties. I would like us to use some ARPA funds to facilitate helping people financially with reasonable repayment plans so that we can increase homeownership, which will help make our neighborhoods more stable and help with the blight problem and increase the homeownership, especially in the south end. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Watts, what two things would you like to accomplish during your term if you're elected?
I too see the need for the parks. You know, growing up here, and my kids growing up here, our parks were first-class, and I don't know what happened in the last few years, but we need to get on a faster pace and invest some money in the parks with a program to get it done, like I say, faster, and have programs for the kids to go do rather than just, you know, be out doing whatever they're doing these days. But they need programs in the park to keep people busy. The second thing I'd like to do is I want to continue on the pace. I've been very passionate about police and fire. We currently have two new fire stations slated to be built in the city, one in Nineveh and Van Dyke and one in Common and Chainer, and they've been on a slow pace, and I'd like to see those get done and all the fire stations get remodeled as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Noonan?
Yes, thank you. One of the first things I want is, I've knocked on about 10,000 doors with my campaign and I. We've talked to a lot of seniors and veterans who are not in great shape in their houses. And I believe that we should have ambassadors to them who are basically social workers who can connect them to all the services that are already available to them. It wouldn't be a big added cost. It would just be making sure that we're taking care of our home. The next thing is I want us to have better greenways to enjoy and after-school sports programs for our kids and improved parks. Many of you are aware that the social-emotional development of kids got delayed with the responses we've had to COVID, where schools generally had to go virtual, and the kids suffered. We need to look after our kids.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Kabisinski, if elected, what two things would you like to accomplish during your term?
So, there are threefold. Number one, reopen the current budget and reduce a lot of the taxation that happened in the outrageous spending that took place in this last budget. There was a lot of wasteful spending that didn't need to take place. That cost is going to be passed on to the property taxpayer. Number two, I also want to focus on the parks. I've been trying to push for the last four years for a Park Ranger Program similar to what they did in the City of Detroit with Belle Isle to protect the financial investment that's being made into the parks. We cannot have Warren Police Regulators patrolling the parks. We can have a Park Ranger Patrol Program that hires internally within Parks Recreation to take care of that. The final thing I think I need to get done here is, with the world developing today, we need to invest in our civil defense again. With things that are going on with terrorism, and now the threat's been made tomorrow for an attack onto the US, we need to invest in civil defense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Perry, two things you would like to accomplish in your term if you're elected?
Two things I would like -- can you hear me? Two things I would like to accomplish is, one is a program called The Promise Zone. This is education for our youth that would provide them free college education. If they don't want to go to college, don't want to pursue a career in the trade schools such as carpentry, plumbing, things of that nature, they can go to a trade school for free. This is all done with business donations and fundraising. Nothing comes from taxes. Also, my second would be to, as my other colleagues have said, working on the parks and get those parks up to standards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question, we'll go first to Mr. Lafferty. If you could change one thing in your district, what would it be?
We have far too many abatements that take place at City Council table, and there are far too many vacant lots that are sitting there idle. And we don't have an ordinance on the books that maintains the character of whatever is built within the character of the neighborhood. That needs to change, and we also need to have a program that markets those available lots, both residential and business. So we need a strong economic development department that will enforce the ordinances we have on the books and also propagate and proliferate investment back into the city.
Thank you. And Ms. Moore, what thing would you change in your district?
Thank you. Well, I would institute a program where we repair the sidewalks like we did in the early 2000s. We started at one end of town, and we went to the other, and we repaired sidewalks along the way. It was a very reduced price to homeowners, and it went on the tax rolls. They had a long time to pay for it, and it made it safer, easier for people to traverse. I'm noticing very difficult sidewalks to pass on as I've been walking through the neighborhoods this summer, and I think we need to do that. It's -- people are falling, tripping, difficulty going on bikes, and especially, you know, some modes of transportation to take the disabled. This is a very, very dangerous situation. I think we need to address it sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Watts?
That's a tough thing. All the things that need to be done, and we've got to pick one. You know, I'd like to work harder on the blight program. It seems like every year we deal with the same things over and over, so I'd like to see something where if there's a problem this year, it doesn't have to start over next year. And perhaps, I know I have, there's a couple of new homeowners in our, in my neighborhood, and a program that we can help people by loaning them the tools they need or equipment to take care of their yards, and maybe an education program for some of the younger people and that, you know, to learn how to take care of their yards. I know that, you know, my neighbor, I've been helping him, and he's very grateful for that. So I know when I was young, it was tough, but I think a program to help people get started, it's expensive to buy everything these days, so loan a program with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Mr. Noonan, what one thing would you change?
Sure. This is a tough question because there's a lot of flooding in the neighborhoods, and also a lot of streets need to be repaired. But I think that I agree with Jonathan Lafferty. I think the general gist is, many of the citizens have told me they have too many rental houses in their proper, in their, in their neighborhoods, and those go bad all too frequently, and there's very, it's very hard to get ahold of the landlords and do anything about it. If we could encourage the landlords to sell the houses and have more homeownership, that would be awesome.
Thank you very much. And that was Mr. Noonan, I'm sorry. Okay. I lost track. Is Mr. Kabisinski next? Very good. What, what one thing would you do in your district to change?
So, this has been ongoing right now, is working with the Tifa and the DDA to bring more retail south of Stevens Road to Eight Mile Road, bring the days of old that we had in the south end with a vibrant downtown area that we used to have in the old part of the city in the south end. And now we have Coney Islands, we have dollar stores, and we have businesses that are vacant. We need to return to a walkable downtown that we used to have in the south end, and quit trying to focus on having a big development in the north end of town.
Thank you very much. Mr. Perry?
We need to return to a walkable downtown that we used to have in the South End, and quit trying to focus on having a big development in the North End of town.
Thank you very much. Mr. Perry, what thing would you change in your district?
While walking through the district's door knocking, I too have found that the sidewalks are in horrendous condition. That's one of the things I'd like to change, as well as some of the streets. Also, helping out veterans that are in dire need of help with their homes, things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. McGee?
I would revitalize all of District One. I would start with the South End. I want a better welcoming city. If you have flowers to hang on top, I want them to be flowers also in the South and North End that are hanging throughout the poles, the light poles in the city. I would bring a voting pole on the Eight Mile End. We have one on the Nine, Nine Mile and Ten Mile and Twelve Mile. I would like to see a voting pole location on Eight Mile, along with trying to make sure that we have youth programs along the way, resource centers for seniors while revitalizing the city. And I will also bring a health and recovery center on the South Side of the city within District One.
Thank you very much. Next question, we'll go first to Ms. Moore.
What are your thoughts about a downtown?
I have always been in favor of downtown. I was on City Council when we first really started major work. I was involved, and my name is on the founding plaque of the City Hall. It was the first thing we built in the downtown. We envisioned a walkable downtown with small shops, bars, restaurants, areas where people could mingle, maybe have fire pits, areas where we could have small music groups, maybe a dry cleaner, coffee shop, and have, you know, maybe some housing above. And I'm still in favor of that. I want there to be amenities that all of our residents in the city can enjoy, not just people with a lot of money or people coming in from Bloomfield Hills to go to a four-star restaurant or a five-star hotel. I want something for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Watts, what about your thoughts about a downtown?
So I'm in favor of a downtown. I was not in favor of taking tax dollars and funding this massive project. I welcomed everybody to come to the table. Unfortunately, we were, we were not able to get the other side of the table. But I would like to have a nice walkable downtown with shops, what have you, for those of us that have been around this town for a long time and experienced it. Nineveh Van Dyke, believe it or not, was walkable. You could grocery shop on Friday night, you grocery shopped, you went to the drugstore, you went to, you'd get a haircut, you went to the jewelry store, the furniture store. It was restaurants. It was very walkable. And they tore it all down, and they were supposed to build an international eatery at Nineveh Van Dyke. Never happened. Never happened. And we can't build a downtown at Twelve of Van Dyke if we don't fix up the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Noonan, your thoughts on a downtown?
Right. The people that I have spoken to in District Five are generally in favor of having the area around the Civic Center be a beautiful park area where it's very attractive to walk in and spend time in. And then they would like stores to go with that, like a bistro, ice cream parlor, maybe stuff like you might see in Frankenmuth, like a fudge stand and, you know, other kind of touristic stuff. But generally, they don't want a lot of, to spend a lot of money on fixing up the Civic Center when so much of the city of Warren has retail operations that aren't doing great. And so we would like to see the wealth kind of spread out more, you know, perhaps all the way down to Eight Mile. And so that's, that's most of it. Maybe Joe Randazzo's, people are talking about, possibly other upscale upstart. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Mr. Kaba-Zinsky, your thoughts on a downtown?
So yes, as I intimated earlier, I said we should revitalize the original downtown, the walkable downtown that Mr. Watts had alluded to that we had in the South End and that was abandoned. We used to have the Motor City Roller Rink, and we used to have the Motor City Theater. I can remember when I was a young kid, when I first came to Warren, that was when I was 12, my sister and I rode bikes up there, and we went to the matinee where they had the cartoons, and then they had the matinee show for the kids. And we don't have that anymore. We don't have that really walkable, safe area. Everybody remembers a child that was hit on his bicycle over there on Stevens and Van Dyke, and this is what we have to be concerned with now. We can't allow the children to be up and down on Van Dyke and go to the corner store and, and, you know, go with their families because they have to worry about dangers in the South End.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Perry, downtown?
Yes, I'm in favor of downtown, and most of the residents that I've talked to during, while door knocking, have also expressed interest in a downtown. I would prefer it to be pretty much between Eight and Fourteen Mile. And we want to have, you know, a walkable restaurants. One has become so diverse that we have a myriad of different types of foods and restaurants, things of that nature. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms. McGee, what are your thoughts on a downtown?
I am in favor of the downtown as long as we spend money budgets to also revitalize the other parts within Warren. I'm also, I also would like for it to follow a process in which we have diversity within contractors. I would like to see supplier diversity where it include women, owned businesses, contractors, as well as those people of color who have contracts, construction contracts downtown. I would also like to see where the majority of the people that are hired for the new downtown will first conduct interviewing within the city of Warren. I would like to see our city of Warren residents to be first, and so I'm definitely in favor of a new downtown.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lafferty, downtown?
Thank you. Also in favor of a downtown, I did reject the proposal, like many of my colleagues did, of the $30 million welfare check that was going to be given to a private developer. A successful downtown is not one that's located on a single corner. It is one that traverses the entire Van Dyke corridor where we can establish districts of commerce, of diverse commerce, dining, retail, entertainment, biotech and innovation. All of that sustains a downtown. You bring people in to work within the downtown area and along the entire Eight to Fourteen corridor along Van Dyke. That is what begins a sustainable effort and a model of economic commerce that will not benefit one area or one particular class. It benefits everybody along the entire corridor. Like many of my colleagues said, a strong neighborhood around it is also vital to sustaining a downtown or a retail commerce corridor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next question, we'll go first to Mr. Watts. What would you do to maintain the budget without an increase in taxes?
I don't think that's really that hard right now. We have quite a fund balance going on, so there's probably a few areas we can cut, but, you know, there's, there's things that need to be done. There's a lot of money being saved, there's a lot of money not being spent. You know, we're, like the library, for instance, we have a special millage rate for the library. We're not even using the money. It's got a huge fund balance, I think about $7 million. So we could cut there and spend some money in other spots, but there's, there's plenty of room without making massive cuts to keep city services going. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Noonan, how do you maintain the budget without increasing taxes?
I think I'll basically be deferring to what Mr. Gary Watts had to say on this subject. He knows more about it at this point than I do. I look forward to learning more. In general, I'm against corruption, and I feel that there's probably been quite a lot of waste in the city, and I'm hoping that the next administration will be able to cut back on that and still do programs like have ambassadors to go out to seniors and to veterans to make sure that they're all okay. And also, we need to fix the roads. And I, I don't know whether there's enough money. I know that the, the city's been very conservative in spending lately, but we need, we need a lot of roads fixed. The roads that weren't fixed in 2019 still aren't fixed today, a lot of them. As I say, a lot of roadwork has been done in the city, but many, many people are complaining. Their road is just shabby, and when they're seniors, it's tough.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kaba-Zinsky, how would you maintain the budget without raising taxes?
So I will say that I was probably the lone person to vote against the budget. I believe that $315 million was too much to be spent, current, given our current economy and given that everybody is having to deal with inflation right now. Our budget should reflect that inflation, and it didn't. There was an increase in spending. There's a lot of wasteful spending that's being done in the budget, and it was practically offensive that the budget was concocted at a kitchen table on a weekend and that only certain council were invited or participated in that. So I would do massive cuts on the budget. There are a lot of items that the county, the state, and the federal government are responsible for in the budget, and that it would be a cost savings to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Perry, what, how do you maintain the budget without raising taxes?
I'm not very familiar with that as yet, but there has been a lot of waste that has been used in the city of Warren.
A little closer.
Probably some things that can be cut back without hurting the citizens. Thank you. So therefore, once I get into City Council, I'll be more adept to seeing what can be worked on to keep the budget without raising taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. McGee, what would you do to maintain the budget without raising taxes?
Well, I would do three things. One, I would do some technical studies on what other cities are doing to maintain that budget in order without cutting taxes, how, how other cities are going about making sure that taxes are cut. I would involve the community. You have quite a bit of professionals who know all about budgets and make sure that they get on board on what we're doing, make sure that we report that out, to make sure that we can find all kinds of ways that we can cut that budget and bring it down. And I would review the budget on a regular basis. I will make sure that we review it at least quarterly to make sure that, we're making sure that we point out every area and go into it in detail about ways we can make changes to make sure that we keep taxes low as possible for our community.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Lafferty, how do you maintain a budget without increasing taxes?
Serving on the committee to review and, and prepare the budget each year with Councilwoman Moore, we have worked to depth to prepare a budget based on the recommendation from the mayor and then working through very carefully, looking at each and every single department to ensure that they are adequately funded. And you will recall that during the COVID times, that we actually did even reduce the millage rates for the library because we were collecting too many taxes. We had too much money in, in the coffers, and we're only legally obligated to collect so much. We're only legally allowed to collect so much. So we did actually reduce the collection of taxes by reducing the millage rate for a period of time and then restoring it later on. Our times are good. We have a healthy fund balance, and that is how you maintain a balanced budget. At this time, there is no need to raise any taxes to maintain the city. We are in a very healthy position at this point in time.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Moore, how do you maintain the budget without raising taxes?
Well, we have, as Mr. Lafferty mentioned, we work very diligently on the budget process. We don't have a budget or money problem. We have a mismanagement problem. We have had misappropriation of funds, and we probably have too many political appointees in the city. That could be lowered. We're not paying people enough money. We're having trouble hiring some people, and so those are some budget things that we have to address and without any more money coming from the residents. We have plenty of money in our budget to address the problems we have right now. There's just been a lack of interest in spending those monies to get those things done, and hopefully in this next term, we can address those things and we'll see improvement throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question, we'll go first to Mr. Noonan. Mr. Noonan, what specific policies will you enact to improve transparency in city, in city government?
Thank you so much. I believe that the Open Meetings Act needs to be upheld completely, and as a school board trustee, I got a lot of training in that. If there's an official meeting, it needs to be posted, and people have to be allowed to go to that. The, the number of board members or council members for a quorum can't be present in a non-business meeting for discussions of council business or school board business, things like that. They're, they're very essential to transparency.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Kaba-Zinsky, transparency in government?
So I can only speak for myself about being transparent. I'm not going to speak about anybody else because that's for them to speak on, but I believe I've been very transparent. I've been very open. Anybody can look at my campaign financing statements and see that the majority of the money that has gone for being in District Five has gone back right into the district or back into the city of Warren. I have not kept any of the money for myself. It has gone right back into the district, and that has come at my detriment with several of the lawsuits that presented themselves. So that, that was at my detriment, and that's a lesson learned. It's, the only other item I can bring about transparency was, again, the budgetary process. I don't believe that that was followed through correctly. I did go to the police and the sheriff's department, filed complaints. Those complaints are still ongoing and being investigated as regards to the budgetary process and the way it was handled.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Perry, how do you improve transparency in city government?
People can come, people can come to the City Council meetings, could have town hall meetings. I have a website that people can go onto and see the, anytime that they want to address situations in the city. I could put flyers up at the library, community centers for them to see for any town halls and gatherings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. McGee, the transparency, improved transparency in city government?
I said this on before, I believe that our council, as well as our mayor, need to communicate much better, and I would do some research on how we can do that and make it happen. I've seen other cities make it happen where they can come together and make decisions and improve things that are in the city, communication with our residents, and that's by providing them information. There could be newsletters, through resource centers. You can do that through, like you said, town hall meetings, neighborhood meetings. There's quite a bit of ways that we can make sure that we communicate effectively to our, our community, as well as put together groups that will work within the community that's willing to assist us so that we can communicate better to our community.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Lafferty, how do you improve transparency in city government?
I've spoken about this at council meetings several times, and you do that first by re-establishing and restoring the Communications Commission. That is a group of appointed individuals from the city that have the authority to watch over all of the communications coming out of City Hall, the City Council Office, the Treasurer's Office, and they give the equality across all branches of government not to be equality across all branches of government, not to be held unilaterally by the executive branch, but ensuring that all branches of government have equal access to the communication channels within the city. Restoring the newsletter under the Communications Commission to ensure that our communications are not used as political tools, but they are only used to effectively communicate all of the information which is intended to be public and for their benefit, not the benefit of the politicians behind the microphone.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Moore, improved transparency in city government?
Thank you. When this council took office, one of the first things we were faced with was a lawsuit which had charged the former city council with violating the Open Meetings Act and some dealings they had. So we were very diligent and very aware that we had to be extra, extra vigilant about making sure we were always following the Open Meetings Act. We have tried to be, go even beyond that. We use our Facebook page to communicate with residents. We enacted an open government ordinance which would require the clerk to post all meeting notices, agendas, minutes, recordings. We pass an ordinance to mandate that DDA meetings are recorded so that the residents can see what's going on in their government, and I would like to see more of that, that none of those things have been followed through by this administration. So hopefully in the next term, we will be able to implement those things, and the residents will be faced with a more transparent government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Watts, how to improve the transparency in city government?
So I've always been for transparency. I know I tried in the beginning to be open with the mayor's office, and unfortunately, it didn't work out too well. But, you know, even when I find out from things from City Hall or other things going on, I put it on my social media. I keep the people up to date. I do Facebook Lives. I do Driving with Councilman Gary, so that people know exactly what's going on in our community. If there's a neighborhood meeting, I attend the neighborhood meetings. There was regular neighborhood meetings in the south end of my district regularly until COVID struck, and those meetings never really got off the ground after COVID. So I'm hoping that as things start getting better, we can reinstitute those. I did some coffee with Gary as well at like a local restaurant, and I've always been, you know, open at the council meetings. I'm never for closed meetings. We've been slapped with a lot from the previous administration, and the citizens are paying for that right now with lawsuits. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question, we'll go first to Mr. Kabazinski. There is a notable difference between North and South Warren. What three things will you do to help correct the disinvestment?
Well, that's a very loaded question right there. You know, I think there's been such ingrained that there is a difference between South Warren and North Warren, and it doesn't help having center line in the middle. Our city's kind of shaped like a donut with, you know, center line as a donut hole, and that doesn't really help. And then the intimation of the 696, the ditch, you know, separates the two ends of the city. I don't know. I think the characteristic of South Warren seems to be the more working-class, blue-collar individual, and the north end of town seems to be the more white-collar, college-educated individual. And it's having to do with socioeconomic status about housing prices. It also has to do with quality of merchandise in the area. We've got more dollar stores in the south end than you would have in the north end of the city. So I think...
Thank you very much. Sorry, your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Perry, there is a notable difference between North and South Warren. What three things will you do to help correct the disinvestment?
One of the things would be to take care of the rental situation in South Warren. We need to have more homeownership and less rentals. That way, people can take care of their properties. There would be less blight and get the roads repaired.
Thank you very much. Or, I'm sorry. Thank you. And Ms. McGee, what three things will you do to help correct the disinvestment?
The first thing I would do is shift some of the budget funding towards the south end of Warren. It's important that we also revitalize, and we think of them, they are human, they are people, and they are, that's our community, and they deserve to have revitalization on that end, on the south end. The other thing that I would do is invest my time. Oftentimes, one of the biggest complaints that I hear by knocking doors is that we never see any of our political officials on the south end. So we need to invest our time with them, and we need to listen to them and what their concerns are all about. The other thing I would do is I would bring along training and development at our resource center that we need to have on the south end. We need to tell the people about how they can improve their homes and how they can go about getting funding to assist them when it comes to their economic condition. So those are the things that I would do.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lafferty, there is a notable difference between the North and South, between North and South Warren. What three things would you do to help correct the disinvestment?
That's one of the first questions that I was asked when I was first elected, and at the council table, I asked for an analysis of our parks and recreation funding, the entire five-year parks funding plan, and our road planning, and to understand how our funding sources distributed across the sections of Warren, all four quadrants of the city, not just north and south, but all four quadrants. And I found that we were distributing the money equally, but when it comes to property maintenance and care from city inspectors, that that is where the problems actually manifested themselves. We've had many, many discussions, and we pointed out the issues, and we've asked for, council has sent resolution to ask for resources to be addressed there, and I am expecting the next administration to follow through with those resolutions. Third, we have to have a public relations effort to mend the divide and eliminate the divide. We are one Warren. We are not North and South Warren. We are one Warren, and until we begin saying it, we're not going to start acting like it.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moore, what three things would you do to help correct the disinvestment?
Well, first, we need to invest money and help people become homeowners. I think that's number one. That will make the community more stable. We have a lot of areas that are just underserved in the south end. One of the areas was Nine and Chainer. Mr. Watts and I were very involved in that community, and we knew they needed a library. So we worked very hard with the Library Commission, Treasurer Barnwell, and a library is going to be put there, a modular library. And also, we're anticipating having a library of things in that area, so that perhaps a post digger or a rake you could come and take out, or a bunt pan, or some sort of serving, so that that community could go to the library and get certain things they need. I think some of the blight problem is people don't have the instruments and the tools to maintain their properties. This might be one way of them getting those things they need to help maintain, and having education programs to aid them to maintain compliance with our blight program.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And Mr. Watts, three things?
Okay. So this is something that kind of hits close to home here. You know, I grew up in the south end, what we call the south end, needed a bigger home, ended up in the north end. Now, talking about the library, it's not about a north and south problem. It's an east and west problem. There is not one library east of Van Dyke, not one. We've been working for two years to get one in the southeast section, and it's still not off the ground. We did our job. So I think, and then as far as like, we talked about the downtown development, equal development. You can't develop a downtown at 12 and Van Dyke if you don't develop something between eight and nine and a half, because people are not going to drive through a bunch of blight and problems to get to this fancy downtown at 12 and Van Dyke. It's not going to happen. The other thing is equal investment. So if we're going to do sidewalks in the north end, we should do the equal amount of sidewalks in the north and south at the same time. Same way with the roads. The last thing, I agree with the homeownership. We're spending too much money on vacant properties, and we should invest it in our ownership.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Watts. Mr. Noonan, what three things would you do to help correct the disinvestment between North and South?
There is a notable difference between North and South in Warren, and we want to equalize the economic disparity. And there are two things I have in mind. One is economic investment and getting grants to build up commercial businesses all along the Van Dyke corridor. Also, I would like to incentivize landlords to sell their houses so that we have more homeowners. I have made my contact information available on every mailer, and I've sent out, that I've sent out, and walking piece I have presented to the voters in District Five. I'm eager to continue to work with our citizens and business owners to put good ideas into practice. So many people had great ideas. It's too many just to mention right here.
Thank you very much. And next question, we'll go first to Mr. Perry. How would you address the problem of property neglect by absentee landlords?
To address the blight by absentee landlords first would be to contact that landlord and see if there's a problem. If there isn't, then they will be cited and ticketed to take care of their property. If that doesn't, if that continues, it would have to go to the county, I would assume, and see if we could purchase that property and turn it over at a affordable price for a homeowner that would like to live in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. McGee, the problem of property neglect and absentee landlords?
I would address it by coming up with a process regarding landlords and renters. And by approving this process step by step, then we will follow that process and make sure that if the landlord did not follow that process, that we would provide, we would give them tickets, as well as take them through some type of training and development as far as how to become a better landlord, and we would have to somehow work it out where the property, again, will be removed from them if they don't follow the process properly.
Okay. Thank you so much. And Mr. Lafferty?
Very simple. This comes down to ordinance enforcement. Enforce the rules we already have on the books, and we must hire qualified rental inspectors and property maintenance inspectors to enforce those rules, barring any political favoritism to certain individuals. We have to get serious. The way to fix a problem rental is to hold the business license that rental has, that landlord has, over their head. If they don't maintain their property, if they don't meet rental inspections, and we don't toughen up and begin to enforce the laws that are already on the books, then these landlords are going to continue to get away with all of the offenses that they have. I've shut down two different rentals in my term of office. One was an Airbnb party house, and we continued to list out all of the police and fire visits to that home, and eventually got it shut down, and most recently, a hotel home operating like a Holiday Inn on a residential street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moore, property neglect and absentee landlords?
Mr. Lafferty really stated it very succinctly what the problem is. In addition to all the things Mr. Lafferty said, landlords come in and buy lots of property, properties in lots, and I think we need to do a better job of vetting who these people are that are buying these properties, because we have a history with lots of them that we should not allow them to keep buying properties and doing the same thing over and over again. We do have a rental inspection. It needs to be amped up. Our properties will be inspected for 15 minutes, and if there's a problem a month later and someone calls, they're told that was already inspected. Well, conditions change, and we're not addressing that. So that's a big problem, and there's certification and programs that inspectors can undergo, and we need to do that, because most of our inspectors for blight zoning and a lot of things aren't certified to the level they should be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Watts?
So this is something, I've had a lot of phone calls in my four years on the council, and I've done a lot of research. We have a lot of rental homes. I tracked down one owner operating under three different names with over 400 homes in this city, and the address, the mailing address for taxes is in California at a storefront. And I can't follow that, but I have a sneaking hunch that it goes to China. That's a problem. That's a huge problem. Now, we do have a requirement. You have to have a management company, but when you check out the management companies that they hire, or they're in their name too, nothing gets done. We need higher, we need better inspections. We need tough inspections, and we need to increase the price on the rental inspections as well. We got to be tough. We don't enforce anything now. Well, the administration doesn't enforce anything. So council needs to make sure the next time that this happens.
Thank you. Mr. Noonan, how would you address the problem of property neglect and absentee landlords?
I really liked what Jonathan Mindy and Gary had to say. I had already written most of that down on my paper before they said it, though. Anyway, so how would you address the blight of absentee landlords? Well, I believe this is an enforcement problem, and that we have the necessary codes on the books. We need a mayoral administration that will make sure our codes are enforced, and they had some great ideas as to how to improve the code enforcement, and I agree with all of them.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Kabazinski?
So here's the problem succinctly, foreign ownership. That's the big problem. Just as well as what's happening in our farmland right now, we have a lot of out-of-the-country ownership of property. Mr. Watts kind of alluded to that with his research, and also a lot of out-of-state ownership of property. What needs to happen is there has to be either local ownership of the property within the county or also within the state. No out-of-state ownership of property that are rentals or homeownership, and definitely not anything from outside of the country, especially those countries that are hostile to the United States.
Thank you very much. Next question, we'll go first to Ms. McGee. What is the responsibility, excuse me, what is the responsibility of a council member to ensure communication and teamwork among council for the benefit of the Warren residents?
I think the responsibility of the city council is to make sure that we go out and communicate to our residents. I mean, it's not just for us to be up on a stage or to talk to our residents, but to really to get involved with them, and that include in the activity that goes along the city. Not to say that our current city council is not doing that, but our residents, from when I was knocking the doors, they want more of that. They want us to listen to them. They want us to be more involved in the community as, you know, leadership, and I believe that we can do that through getting involved with activities throughout the city.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Lafferty?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. What is the responsibility of a council member to ensure communication and teamwork among council for the benefit of Warren residents?
This is a team. Sitting on council is a team effort, and like, a great example is what you're hearing tonight. Each one of us shares a different background. Each one of us brings something different to the table, and you foster communication by respecting each and everyone else's individual backgrounds, their diverse backgrounds. When you have that, you have the expertise of the police and fire departments like Mr. Watts brings, the legal aspect like Ms. Moore brings, and others, they bring their expertise to the table. That fosters good communication through mutual respect. That fosters equally good communication with the boss, and the boss is not the mayor. The boss is the people. The org chart says the taxpayers are the people, and they are the boss of all of the officials that are elected here. That enables us to get the job done when we focus on who the boss is.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moore, communication and teamwork for the benefit of... Thank you very much. Ms. Moore, communication and teamwork for the benefit of Warren residents?
Thank you. Of course, all official action has to be taken as a body. We can't make decisions in little groups or two people at a time. We have to be very careful about our communication. We can never have communication about council items with more than three people in attendance, so we've been very careful about that. But we also have absolutely worked as a team. Mr. Watts and I are on the road all the time going and checking out blighted properties and going to fire stations and talking to the police officers and finding out what's going on. You know, Mr. Lafferty handles contracts because he's got expertise in that area and he sings. The rest of us don't sing. He's our singer. So we do collaborate. We have, we really, this has been the best council that I have seen in all of my years in Warren and having served, you know, 20 years ago to after four years, still have this cohesive group that absolutely respects each other and works together is just amazing to me. And if we only had cooperation, we could have really, really done great things.
Thank you very much. Mr. Watts, communication and teamwork?
You know, from day one, I didn't know what to expect being my first time on council, but I gotta tell you, what an incredible team. All seven of us. There's one person out of the seven that actually quit talking to me because I wouldn't vote on the downtown. So I always reach across the aisle. I've talked to every person on the council. We always talk. We communicate. Mr. Kabisinski calls me about issues, Ms. Moore, Mr. Lafferty and Mr. Green. And a lot of times being the fact that I'm retired, they'll call me and they'll say, hey, can you go take a look at this blighted property? We all communicate. We have a great team. We've got a lot done. We could have got a lot more done if we would have had the team on the other side meet us halfway. I can't imagine. And I've reached out and I had, I had a retired senator mentioned to me at a party recently. He says it's amazing how you reach across the aisle, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Noonan, what is the responsibility of a council member to ensure communication and teamwork among council for the benefit of Warren residents?
First of all, when you're on a council or on a school board, you're not required to be friends with each other. You need seven different points of view and everyone needs to be honored when they bring that to the table. We should however, try to get to know each other and learn and speak to each other about the problems addressing the public and do our best to resolve those, preferably peacefully and with collaboration with the mayor. But on the other hand, say if the mayor weren't willing to collaborate for whatever reasons of their own they had, it would make it very tough on a city council. And I hope I don't find myself in that position.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Kabisinski, please. Ensure communication and teamwork for the benefit of Warren residents?
So as far as communication, I thought a question like this might come up. I've totaled up the amount of actual calls for service I've gotten from residents within the four years being on council. And they came out to 641. I was actually bringing this up at the last council meeting. But 641 communications and responding to calls for service within the 5th district during the four years. My communication has either been in person, which is what I prefer, or on the telephone or through email. I have been public about not participating in any way, shape or form in the social media cesspool because you get a lot of false information. There's a lot of false information online and it just turns into a big bicker fest. So my goal is to respond to the residents directly and handle their concern directly.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Perry, communication and teamwork for the benefit of residents? How does that get done?
Communication and teamwork. By me being on the Warren zoning board of appeals, we run across a lot of opposition. Point in fact is just recently, there was a group of people that wanted to bring in a multi-family building in a residential area, single-family residential area. And they tried to make points, you know, about how well it would be for the residents and everything. But the residents, they do not want multi-family buildings or apartment buildings and a single-family resident. And we have variances that to date that that is not the way it should be. Anyway, they were denied and through the Warren zoning board of appeals. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question is the last question and it will go first to Mr. Lafferty. Are you looking to apply for grants to fund new programs for Warren? Or would you consider hiring a grant writer to help access funding?
Yes. The, this council did indeed hire a grant writer and we have, one is not enough. We should have 10 grant writers. There is plenty of federal funds. There's plenty of state funds that this city has not gotten its fair share of. And we need to be applying for that as often as possible. And we've seen a lot of grant money go to the wayside, go to other communities and we wondered, how did they do that when they have a grant writer? And so absolutely in favor of hiring additional grant writers to bring additional funding to the city. We cannot keep, you know, going back to Mr. and Mrs. John Q. Taxpayer for all of the tax funding. We need to look for alternative funding and that is through grants, state and federal.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moore?
Thank you. We do need to hire grant writers, more than one. In the previous administration of the 2000s, there was a grant writer in the fire department that paid his own, mostly they usually pay for their own salaries in addition to getting money for those departments. The police department writes grants, but they probably need a full-time person. There was a person in the mayor's office that wrote grants, but that, since that person left, I don't think anybody has been applying for grants. And that needs to be a focus because there's a lot of money out there that can be had. We just have to have the right people writing and requesting those funds. We need to have better cooperation with our state-elected officials. It's been almost no communication whatsoever. And when I was involved before, we would have monthly meetings with the state reps, senators that would come and have meetings with council, let us know what was going on, what was available. We really had none of that this term. And it's been sort of a disconnect of a lot of those things that we could have maybe had an opportunity to gain. So I absolutely, we need a grant writer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Ms., I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Watts.
Easy answer. Yes, yes and yes. We need grant writers in every department. I know the police department does a lot of grant writing. Fire department does some grant writing, but each individual department needs a grant writer in there and maybe share some of those resources between departments. You could probably use one writer for two different departments. But we are missing out on millions and millions of dollars in grants. And I can tell you that my last 10 years at the college, I had to inventory all the equipment that was supplied by grant money and I can't tell you how many millions we got at the college. The same way when I was at Centerline as a police reserve officer, we had somebody in the department that wrote grants. We got free stuff all the time, all the time. And if you have a great relationship, I had a relationship with Macomb County Emergency Management for the college and I picked up a couple million dollars worth of grants to do things at the college just by going to a meeting once a month. So absolutely, we need, we need those resources.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Noonan, please?
Yes, thank you. So there are state and federal grants we should have pulled down. And what we really need is a mayor who will seek the grants and the grant writers needed. Without, we have a strong mayor system. The city council can only do so much. I would like to be able to uplift the downtrodden areas of the city very much. And I have a lot of ideas for how that could be done. There are different ways of saving a lot of money. And we need a mayor who's going to be consciously going after that and energetically, not micromanaging whether trees get cut down or not. Just saying.
Thank you very much. Mr., excuse me, Kabisinski, are you looking to apply for grants to fund new programs for Warren? Or would you consider hiring a grant writer to help access funding?
So I actually have to acknowledge of this. I actually did apply for a grant and it was a federal grant. It was during the Trump reelection of 2020 when the parks, National Parks and Forestry Grant was being done. When I met with President Trump and Vice President Pence when they came to Selfridge, I did talk to them about this. We had $3 million grant available to us to get started, that Parks and Recreation, Parks Patrol program that I talked about, as well as a nature center and I believe the butterfly garden that I wanted to get done. And that would have been in Underwood Park where Warren Dale Elementary used to be. We would have been able to purchase the land. The problem is, the mayor and this council didn't like where the grant funding would have come from. And they would have had to acknowledge that a Republican president was offering money up to the city of Warren and was going to provide $3 million to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Perry?
As the rest of the council here said, yes, we need to hire more grant writers for each department. And I think that would be the best option for Warren to get this money in to help with the city and the diversity of this city. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. McGee, would you consider hiring a grant writer to help access funding?
Yes, I will consider hiring a grant writer, but also I would come up with a budget first, our city council, in which we'd hire those grant writers. I don't want to hire a grant writer who, who don't understand our budget. I wouldn't want to hire a grant writer who wouldn't understand our needs in all areas of Warren. And I would like for the grant funding to go to all areas of Warren when hiring that grant writer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now go to the closing statements, which should, will not exceed one minute per candidate. And the order of the closing statements are in reverse order of the opening statements. So we will start with Mr. Kabisinski, please.
Thank you ma'am. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for offering this opportunity. As I said earlier, I don't have any delusions of grandeur. I know darn well that people have already voted in their absentee ballot and their mail-in ballot and then a write-in basically doesn't have any chance. This was my opportunity, probably my second to last opportunity to speak to the public, especially about the election fraud that occurred in this election. The election for the 5th district council will be decided hopefully in the court of appeals because every one of the candidates were ineligible and unqualified in this election and I hope to prevail on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Noonan, closing statement?
Thank you. I am indeed Mr. Henry Noonan and I'm on the ballot. You can vote for me. I'm a retired graphic designer. I have a proven track record of public service. I've been on the Centerline School Board for 13 years. I've been the chair of the Southeast Michigan Group of the Sierra Club. I've been the chair of the Warren Centerline Prevention Coalition trying to keep kids off of drugs, alcohol and nicotine. And I'm endorsed by the UAW, Warren Firefighters, the IBEW, the Painters and Allied Trades Union, AFL-CIO, AFSMI, the Michigan Building and Construction Trades Council, the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors and the Sierra Club. We believe in clean air, clean water, environmental justice and the rights of women to control their own bodies.
Thank you very much. Next we have Mr. Watts, please.
Okay. First, thank you for the opportunity and hosting this tonight. Wish there was more people here, but what I like to say is, you know, it's been hard work for the last four years. Being retired, I have the time to put into it. I think I've been accountable to the citizens for four years. One of the residents said to me recently, how many phone calls do you think you made, you get? And I stood a simple average for four years at three phone calls a day, which is probably low some days. And, you know, council meeting days is probably 10 or 12, but anyways, I came up with like 4,500 phone calls I took over that period of time. And it didn't matter whether you called me from North Warren, South Warren, East-West, another district, I went there and I visited with the people. I've taken care of a lot of problems. So I hope I've done a good job and I hope the people appreciate it and I hope they'll return me to office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moore, your closing statement, please?
Thank you. We are going to have a new mayor for the first time in 16 years. That's going to be a big adjustment. I have the most experience of anybody running for office this time and I have been an effective leader during this term. I've led budget negotiations and contracts and I have been sort of the leader in keeping people informed about what's going on. I've led the council office, which has been a big job. And I think that leadership skill and set will be very instrumental in going forward in the next four years. I have a lot of information to share and help the new mayor coming in because there's a lot of things they won't know that I know and I think that I can be very helpful to them and a good liaison between the council and the new mayor. So I look forward to that challenge. I think this is an exciting time for us and I can't wait to see what the new mayor has in store for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Lafferty, please?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for the invitation tonight. It's been a pleasure to be here. This election is about a new era for the city government. It is not about electing a rubber stamp authority. We are here to serve the neighborhoods. We are here to serve the people that elect us. Not political contributors, not the, not to be rubber stamps that sit at a table and make decisions in a vacuum. City council is here to serve the residents, plain and simple. If you want independent leadership, an independent voice in this district, I'm your candidate. I'm enjoying, anybody that knows me and has had experience with me knows that I enjoy serving my neighborhood. I've lived here my entire life and I look forward to earning your support on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. McGee?
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. The city of Warren has spoken. They are now ready for this historical race and they're looking for someone of diversity. But I'm not just that person who's diverse, but I am a person who's involved. I have the experience. I have over 20 years' experience in manufacturing, purchasing and skilled trades and construction. I have experience in safety. I have certifications in Six Sigma and HR management. I've also worked with budgets. I was instrumental in saving General Motors over $60 million. I work with budgets all over the state of Michigan. I am the person for the job. I am qualified for the job. I am one who, who's pretty much hands-on and I will be in your neighborhood and I will talk to you and I will make sure that I communicate with you. Thank you for having me here.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Perry, closing statement, please?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters. I do not belong to any supergroups or anything like that. I'm an independent. I'm not a politician. I do not have dark money backing me. All of my funds have been donated to my campaign by friends, family and endorsements. My wife and I have knocked a lot of doors, meeting the wonderful people of Warren. I just want to keep Warren safe and improve where needed. I proudly serve my country and it would be an honor for me to serve my city. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I wish to thank the candidates for participating in the City of Warren Candidate Forum for City Council Districts 1 through 5. I also wish to thank our League members for volunteering their time to help this evening. And thank you again to Warren Consolidated Schools for the use of this building and also for filming and to TV Warren. Finally, we'd like to thank you, our audience, for your kind attention and participation. A link to the recording of this forum will be available on the League of Women Voters Macomb County website and on our YouTube channel and on TV Warren. You can also find links to last week's forum for mayor, clerk and council-at-large candidates. The League of Women Voters of Michigan Electronic Voter Guide covering this The League of Women Voters of Michigan Electronic Voter Guide covering this race and other Macomb County races is available at vote411.org and is linked to our website. The primary election is Tuesday, November 7. I'm sorry. My bad. You're right. The general election is Tuesday, November 7, 2023. You can verify your voting registration status and track your ballot by visiting vote411.org, michigan.gov/vote, or by calling your city clerk. Note that you can register to vote up to and including Election Day. To do this, you need to go to the clerk's office and be ready to vote. If you're mailing your ballot back, we suggest you do it by October 15. Be sure to vote, sign the envelope, seal the envelope, and deliver it to the clerk. That's sign, seal, and deliver. You can also take it to the city's ballot drop box. All ballots must be received on or before Tuesday, November 7, by 8:00 p.m. to be counted. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thank you and good evening.